Uh, declare open meeting. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed aye. Uh, open meetings act rules are on the door back there. We'll call Kristen.
Here.
And Vicki.
Here.
myself here, Jason and Mike are both here. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? Pretty short, pretty point. Prove it.
My question for the agenda is ready.
Second head, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed aye, motion carries. Hey, Dr. Albers, you want to make your presentation? Don't you?
Okay. I'm using some of the same information that the board should be used to seeing in in previous years, just kind of continue to add to it. With the primary goal of looking at trend data. That's really something that you can kind of wrap your mind around it to know if you look at, you know, where we're proposing to go, where we have just been, and then going back multiple years, keeping in mind what valuations have done and what other variety of factors are doing. But you kind of want to look at at certain trends and see how and see how those things go. Okay? So, the things that we'll look at briefly include, you know, what State A is done, property valuations, which is kind of the biggest topic and the biggest challenge of the Nebraska Unicameral, honestly, I would say. Levy transit rates for District Five. Taxes generated. General fund budgeted expenditures, which is the overwhelming majority of the funds that you use, that you levy for, and that you use to pay for all your expenses, primarily personnel, budgeted expenditures, budgeted revenues, okay, and other funds. Now, keep in mind also that, you know, a budget, as everybody knows, it's not a whole lot different than what you might prepare for your own home. Okay? There's a lot of anticipatory figures, and if you're fortunate enough, you know, some some planning ahead and planning, you know, for contingency, for things that maybe be that are unforeseen. And school districts obviously need to plan for things like buses going down, boilers going down, roofs, roof issues. There are some where the state will allow you for to expend emergency funds and acquire emergency funds, but not everything. Okay? So, first thing we'll look at is State A. Here's a nice positive slide from last year, I guess you could say. Notice, and this is not unlike a majority of districts in the state of Nebraska, those that have become non-equalized. The TOSA formula is designed to try to provide some level of equalization for students across the state of Nebraska, so that they all are able to provide a basic education in in the mandated curriculum under Rule 10. And so, the school, the TOSA formula takes, it's like Robin Hood, you know, takes from the rich, gives to the poor, so to speak. But more and more districts have been able to provide the revenue that they need, they don't need State A. So, most of State A has gone from rural districts to urban districts in the past 10 years. Okay? So, and we're not unlike most of those rural districts. However, any minor, minor, minor tweak in the TOSA formula can have a pretty dramatic effect, and you really can anticipate it. There was no way for me to anticipate that we would go from $226 in equalization aid to almost $44,000. Okay? So, that's kind of nice, you know, $44,000 is more than just a little bit of pocket change. So, so that's that's positive. Property valuations, as we know, have begun to level off, and in fact, have dropped for 2017, 18, 2.36 percent total. So, that's where our property valuations are, 730 million, I believe. General levy trends, so this would kind of be an inverse of your property valuation a little bit. As valuations went up, the levy went down. Now, as as valuations are leveling off, then, you know, the levy is not going to continue to to go down at that rate. Okay? Here's where your, here's all three different levies, or all, you know, two different levies plus the total. Okay? We saw the general in the previous slide. On the bottom, red line shows our special building fund levy and and so that had an uptick last year. This is obviously for the acquisition and purchase of either property or construction of new property and also furnishing of new property. Okay? So, that's where the total levy, the general building, the total levy trends. Okay? So, valuation and levy trends. If we just looked at the top line of each, okay, there's your valuations, okay, and what they've increased per year. So, went up 18 percent, 29 percent, 11 percent, 1.4, and now down 2.36. Not unlike other rural districts throughout the state of Nebraska, it's just the the valuations were were out of whack when they were going up, and now there's a correction going on. How long that will last and if it will just level off or go down, you know, there's really no way to tell unless the Unicameral intervenes. Okay? So, the total levy then went down 15 percent to get down to 794. So, the board, back in this fiscal year, dropped the levy 15 percent, dropped the levy 23 percent, dropped the levy 7 percent. Last year, we had a 13.5 increase, percent increase in the levy. That was primarily to a doubling of the special building fund, okay? And this year, we're proposing a 2.3 percent levy increase, or just about a penny and a half. Okay? So, there's your total levy. Proposed tonight is is 66 cents. Taxes generated, okay, from 4.1 to just 4, 4.1, 4.8, and now we're actually seeing a 0.06 percent decrease in tax asking in this proposed one. Okay? Based on our present property valuation, each cent, each penny of levy generates approximately $73,000 in tax money. That's a little bit misleading. 1 percent goes to county treasurer, and generally, if you're fortunate to collect over 90 percent of total taxes, okay, so 90 to 94 taxes get, percent of taxes generally get paid, so our tax receipts will be closer to 65.5 per one cent levy. Okay? This, let's see, this might be a good place to interject. Newspaper had just a little bit of misinformation last week. Okay? So, the paper said that the board is going to be, let's see, I can kind of move it back here, that the board will be asked to raise the general levy by two cents. Well, that's not true. Not two cents. Okay? And every fraction of a cent makes a difference when you're talking about $700 million in valuation. Okay? So, if you just overgeneralize the two cents or round up, that that's misleading. The general levy increase proposed is 1.35 cents, not two cents, 1.35 cents. And the difference of 0.6, of 65 percent of a cent, the difference is $47,500. Okay? So, so, you know, I'm looking at not just, you know, two figures to the right of the decimal point, I'm looking all the way out that's provided by the county clerk. And if we go all the way out, it's 1.35 cents, not two cents. And that's a $47,500 difference, which I think is significant to taxpayers. Okay? The building levy is going up 1.6 tenths of a cent, not two tenths. So, again, the paper said two tenths of a cent. Okay? It's 1.6 tenths. That difference is about $3,000. So, I believe the general public was misinformed that we were going to be asking for about $50,000 more than we really are. Okay? Just, now, probably nobody's going to calculate that. Okay? But I just want to make sure we're we're down to the thousandth of a cent, because that makes a difference when you're talking about levying a $700 million valuation. Okay? So, again, there's our levy rate. There's our tax asking, and what our tax asking has looked like, the trend in tax asking, we had that uptick last year. That's total tax asking, special building and general fund, which are your only tax asking funds that we have used. There are others, but we don't use them. Okay? General fund budgeted. Okay? So, from the bottom up, you can see on the right-hand side, that kind of puts things in perspective a little bit, just in terms of the increase. Okay? So, the the general fund budgeted amount, and this includes all your funds. Okay? This isn't, notice, this is different, this is different than we're asking, what we're asking for in taxes, and it's different than what we will spend. We will not spend that amount.
Hopefully.
We will, hopefully. The only thing that would would put us in that position is if we had some type of catastrophic event that we had to pay for out of our out of our budget. Okay? So, a 1.3 percent increase in total budgeted general fund, okay? And and of course, the general fund is is the biggest piece of the pie, the general fund by far is for personnel and should be, okay? In our our general fund, 77 percent of our general fund for next fiscal year, 77 percent goes to personnel. Salaries, benefits, insurance, retirement, 77 percent. And most of that, 77 percent, I mean, was was essentially decided in February 2016. Okay? A majority of school districts now are trying to have a two-year negotiated agreement with their certified staff. Okay? So, that does mean, if there's any downside to that, if there's any downside, it means you are locking yourself into a 77 percent piece of a pie two years later. Unless you expect some attrition or something else, which you can't guarantee. Okay? So, when you approve a teacher negotiated package for two years, so for example, this next year, hopefully, we'll do that for 18, 19, and 19, 20. Okay? So, when we're building a budget in 2019, we're going to be locked into a decision that our board makes with our certified staff here in the next few months. Our 19, 20 budget, 77 percent of it arguably is going to be determined here in the next couple of months. But that's just the nature of this business. Nothing's other than bad thing, that's just reality. General fund tax asking. Okay? Again, I wanted to show that we have an actual decrease in in tax asking in this proposed budget. I mean, it's a fraction of a fraction of a fraction. Okay? But still, in total dollars, it's a it's a decrease. Again, 77 percent of that $4,318 pays for personnel. That's all personnel, certified and classified. Estimated revenues. Okay? And so, those are what they are, just, you know, estimated. Our carryover is part of our necessary cash reserves. You know, we we actually don't collect receipts. All of our receipts for this next year, the second half of taxes, aren't even going to be, we're not even going to collect until September of next year. It'll actually begin the next fiscal year is when we'll collect a huge amount of our funds to pay for, the fiscal year just ended. Okay? But that's just the timetable, the goofy timetable that that school districts, you know, are are put under when they're preparing budgets. Okay? Other major funds, total resources available, not going to be spent, but we do have the budget, we have to show, you know, what what do we have in all these accounts? Okay? So, budgeting could be misleading if people think budget means what you're going to spend, okay, which isn't the case. Okay? So, it shows, you know, essentially what all those are, what our total resource bottom line is, which is an inflated number, but nonetheless, that will be the official official number as far as the financial office services and department is concerned. Okay? Okay? And then I got, I have one more slide. I I think that there may be a perception in the community, and maybe even among, you know, our school board, that we have spent a an abundance of extra money this year because there have been several things that we see that are new around our schools. Okay? And so, there may be a perception. Everybody knows about the the summer project, the bathrooms in the locker room, but there have been a lot of also, you know, things that I have done or approved to help modernize a little bit, restore, just, you know, thinking about the environment that we put our kids in, that we put our teachers in for eight hours a day times 177 or 185 days. Okay? So, oh, that is not what we want to happen at all. Be patient with me. Got it right here. Sorry. Okay? Well, if if the screen that I wanted to show you wouldn't come up, it would have this data on. General fund percent of budget spent at the end of the fiscal year. Okay? Percent of the budget spent. So, we have X amount of dollars budgeted. How much did we spend of that? What percent of that budget did we spend? Okay? 2009, 2010, we spent 93.57 percent of our budget. 10/11, we spent 89.32. 11/12, we spent 90.58. 12/13, we spent 89.14. 13/14, we spent 82.19 percent of our budget. 14/15, we spent 84.82. 15/16, we spent 85.45. This last year, we spent 82.63 percent of our budget. So, there's only been one other time in the past eight years where we spent less of our budget by the end of the fiscal year. Okay? Now, is that through any, you know, conscious decisions on my part to cut back elsewhere so that we could maybe add a, you know, a new sign on the front of each building, okay? Or add some lettering throughout the school, or add some color, or some different things, or purchase something for the maintenance department, which makes their job a whole heck of a lot easier to move snow, for example? You know, not particularly, but when you're talking about spending 4.5 million, okay, when you, you know, spend maybe an extra 20, 25, or 30,000, you know, on some other things just to restore or or beautify or improve the environment, it doesn't blow up your budget, but it may look like, you know, to folks, if you see lots of new things when you hadn't seen anything maybe new in in many, many, many years. Okay? So, only one year in the previous eight budget years, fiscal years, did we spend less of our total general fund budget for the fiscal year. So, apologies if that didn't come up. But those, that's the data that I have for you. Okay? And I don't know if it may be Mr. Peterson or Mr. Sauer on the Budget Committee would have anything that they would want to have.
We try to pay very close attention to what is spent and what is is budgeted. It takes a tremendous amount to keep this school running, and we want the best quality teachers and the best textbooks we can get, and try to keep them up today, and it costs money. There's just no way around it.
I just want to say a little bit about things Derek has been talking about, the little things he's been doing. If you look back over the last probably 30 years, we've been really conservative, had very conservative superintendents, I feel, and a lot of those little things didn't happen. It was kind of a, to me, it was kind of a goodbye mode, keep the ball rolling, but really no improvements, upgrades. And I think he's kind of changed that tone and wants to catch up a little bit on what maybe hasn't been done, so. And like you say, you see a lot of new things going on, but that doesn't mean it's a tremendous amount of money, it's just really improved some looks of the school. But that's what gets talked about. So, with that, you two have any questions? Word on the committee. We'll now open up to questions and comments from the district. Does anybody here have anything they'd like to say or ask?
I'd like to address the board. I appreciate you guys' willingness to serve on the board. It's a thankless kind of a job, but bear with me for some of the questions I may ask you, and don't take anything personal. The superintendent serves at the discretion of the Board of Education. You guys set policy, and the superintendent carries out the policy, is that correct? Okay. Two weeks ago in the paper, I saw where the, and I think a lot of other people saw it also, where $200,000 was possible, the city wanted to spend $200,000 to to pave the street. And they didn't have the money, and our superintendent said, well, possibly the school district could maybe help. My question to you, Tom Sauer and Vicki Peterson, is that part of your, are you are you standing behind what he said? Do you think that that is legitimate expenditures of our money?
Well, how do you look at it if they pave a street in front of somebody's house in town, who's pay, who pays for the people that live in those houses, correct?
There's no houses on that street, it's just-
No, I know, but the school owns that property. It's not made of, if there's a house on the street or not, it's whoever owns the property, they pay for that street.
How is spending those dollars enhance the education of the children we're trying to educate? Vicki?
I think it's more of a safety issue, and it's so muddy down there, and then you get ruts, and you get people wrecking their vehicles and so forth and so forth. And I I don't think this was so much as a definite project as a let's see where we stand. Is there a chance, maybe we could in the future do this? It's not going to happen tomorrow.
Another thing that disturbs me a little bit, this is probably the, one of the biggest meetings of the year, and two of your members are absent. I think that's sad. We're we're talking about, we're spending a lot of money tonight, maybe.
I just wanted to cut for one of them, who's actually on a trip to Florida with a semi loaded diesel to help the people in the flood, the hurricane down there, so let's don't be ragging on him.
I'm not ragging on anybody, so don't be too serious.
I'm just saying, I just wanted to know that he's not here because he doesn't want to be, he's here because he's helping a lot more people.
I did some comparisons also of the budget that Neely is offering, and some of the some of the some of the numbers are really striking. We want to increase our activities fund from 250 to 360. Neely is going to raise theirs to $8,064. And that, their activities fund would come to, they're budgeting 208,000, and we're asking for 360. Does somebody, one of the, one of the board members want to address that for me, please?
I think it would be, each school possibly codes their finances different. Maybe they don't code their referees or their football expenses into the activity account. Maybe they have an actual fund that that goes into, or repair equipment and stuff, maybe it goes to the repair account instead of the actual activity account. So, just because they don't have a big activity account, maybe it's coming somewhere else in their general fund. We'd like to keep a track of our activity fund, so that's why we separate it out more specifically.
Well, there's $160,000 difference there. That that would pay for a lot of, a lot of coaching. Another item that, the nutrition program, I presume that the Neely School District and the Plainview School District basically have about the same enrollment, roughly.
Roughly, yep.
Our nutrition program, I'm sure there's a good, there's a good answer for this one. The difference, where am I got it here? The nutrition program at Neely is $246,000, and what is the one for Plainview?
208, 877.
All right. I'm happy with that. A lot of people never come to the board meeting and do their complaining, they do it at the coffee shop. And I I refuse to go to the coffee shop and complain. I'd rather come here and voice my my grievances or whatever, I think. Charlie Henry with, he's one of the commissioners in Neely, and they go through through the budget line item, talk about where everything's at. And it bothers me that, a little bit, that I don't know that you guys are, none of us are budget people. And I don't hold that against anyone, but it's a tough, it's, this is tough, this is tough work, guys. And I think you're asking for a lot in a downwind economy, and it's probably things are looking worse, not better, so. Take that into account when you guys vote this evening, if you do vote to proceed with the budget as it's been presented to you. Thank you.
You're one of those, Raleigh, too, is, you know, there's different categories with different amounts of money, and you guys look at the ones that have an increase. But we're asking for $3,000 less than last year, so there's a lot of columns there that have decreases. And we aren't looking at those, or you're not saying anything about those, or realizing that there, those columns exist. But the total dollars is the same as last year, they're just, we're just moving them around from one column to the other because of what we're needing, seeing the need to be. It doesn't mean we're asking for more money.
You guys have, can you tell me, what is it costing us to educate a student at Plainview versus other Class D1 schools?
The state average is about $14,000 per student. Okay? And we're, most schools our size are generally within a $3,000 per student range, and there's a tremendous variety of factors that would determine that, but it's primarily personnel, you know, 77 percent of our expenses go to personnel, so that would drive your your per student figure.
Well, I just know that myself, when I give my property tax statement, it comes with about three letters that I put it on the bulletin board, don't open it until January or February or March, because I want to, I want to enjoy the winter. And I think you folks all know what I'm kind of talking about there. And I appreciate you guys' effort, I know what it's like to serve on these boards, so do the best you can. Thank you.
Hey, Raleigh, can I give you just one example that school districts face when it comes to educating students? As a public school, obviously, we have to educate every child that shows a better role. Okay? Required by law to provide a free and appropriate public education and to meet the individual needs of each child. So, if we have a student that requires special services, and those numbers have increased in the past couple generations, and you can argue or discuss the the factors, you know, for that. Year and a half ago, we had a student who lived in the Norfolk District who was removed from the home by Health and Human Services, okay, and sent to live with his grandmother who lives in our district. That child required services in a special school in Wayne. Okay? We, within 48 hours, had to provide that child's education to a school in Wayne that charged us $30,000 a year tuition, and a driver and a vehicle to go to Wayne twice a day. Okay? So, so that student, and I I don't like to use the word cost, the expense to the district for that one student was over $50,000 in last year's fiscal budget, to which, you know, we we have to provide that education. So, those type, and those are anomalies, Raleigh, I mean, but those kinds of things can can happen. My previous school district, we had a girl show up the week before school started, week before school, blind and deaf, fifth grade girl, and I had to find, we had to find a sign language interpreter like that. Now, there's not a lot of those out there, so based on supply and demand, that was an immediate increase of $30,000 to the district the week before school started. So, those things happen, you have to plan a little bit for those, and you do budget a little bit for those. But that it, that exists, and it's all part of the decision-making when when you're creating, when you're creating a budget.
Thanks for coming in, Raleigh, we appreciate you guys' opinions. Anybody else have anything you'd like to say?
So, how much fluff do we, did we put in this budget percentage wise?
Well, if we've got a total budget dispersments and transfers of 8.6 million, okay? Well, if we've got a total budget dispersments and transfers of 8.6 million, okay, but our tax asking is like 4.3. So, and I, you know, I don't even really like to use the word fluff, I mean, but the department will use inflated numbers, you know, I'll use the word inflated. You know, so, but again, this also shows that we're going to spend all of our building fund, all of our depreciation fund, which we, which we earn. So if we're about 12%, which we were last year, there's 12% of our budget that we didn't spend. So if you take the total tax asking, 12% of that is probably, hopefully, if we look at that trend, maybe 10%.
So it wouldn't be a 20% difference, when we spent 80% of our budget?
Well, we've been spending closer to 90. You know, 88 to 92 the past eight years.
So that would be your difference, it'd be that 10, 12% of your budget, your fluff. And that's one thing we want to stay steady at, too, because if you start using that up, we don't have that carryover to the next year. Okay, if there are no more questions, I guess we are adjourned for this meeting. Okay, I'm going to call our second meeting to order. Okay, motion, third meeting open?
Make the motion, Jill.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried, meeting is open. Open Meetings Act rules, can be on the door back there. Roll call, Vicky.
Here.
Jan.
Here.
Krista.
Here.
Myself, here. And the other two are excused, Mike and Jason. Okay, our sixth presentation, proposed tax request for the 2017-18 school year. Need another presentation? Nope. Somebody has something they want to say? Board? After hearing our last meeting? Any questions from the audience, patrons, and the rally?
The Neely Building Fund this year is asking for 675,000, and we're asking for 1.2 million. Can you kind of tell us what those dollars are going to be used, how some of those dollars are going to be spent?
We're not asking for 1.2 million, that's what we'll get after we ask for 500 and some thousand, we already have some of that in bank, so.
We're asking for 505,000, so pretty comparable to Neely. But our balance will be 1.2, if we don't spend any.
Now, I don't know if you're familiar, but we have a committee of about 12, 12 members that we sit down with, and meet, and talk about what needs to be done, what we want to do, which direction we want to go, and that will be, that committee that will make, come to the decision on where we want to go for this year, what we want to do, and then that committee will make the recommendations to the board down the road. As far as improvements go, yeah. I think it will be up to the board to approve or disapprove of. So we really feel like it's a great committee, and we've got a lot of people on there from a lot of different varieties in the district, so we hope everybody's kind of covered in that.
My apologies, Paul's here.
Yeah. Paul is here, so. They do a great job, they volunteer their time, we spent four meetings just looking at every room in these buildings, and what works, what doesn't work. Our maintenance guy is on there, he's on the committee, and he goes around and tells us, you know, he knows more about this building than anybody. Tells us, you know, who it is.
But we had to update, you know, the bathrooms and the locker rooms, because nothing had been done to the elementary bathrooms since that school had been built. They were in terrible shape, and they needed to be updated. And so then, you can't get a company to come in and just do two bathrooms, they want the whole ball of wax. So, you know, it was $500,000, by the time we do six bathrooms and two locker rooms. The kids love it, money well spent, looks beautiful.
Teachers love it.
Teachers love it, yes.
They can lock the doors now.
The janitors do, you have the doors locked, it's great. Do we have a lot of projects?
Yeah.
Heating and air conditioning on our elementary, that's number one on my list, but I know it's spending, so.
One thing we've talked about, too, you know, we've been talking about the old junior high building for years and years, about tearing down every building, and this committee kind of looked at the economy and said, you know, now's not the time to spend that kind of money. So we decided to work on the smaller projects that also need to be done, and try and work on those, and get them up to date first, so, you know, kicking that can down the road even further, and hopefully, if and when we do something with it, you know, we won't be needing to spend money on other projects at the same time, so that would be our major.
With the mobility of our society, with 45 kindergarten, pre-kindergarten kids, how much loss can we expect in a class like that by the time they get to be in junior high?
None, none, we're not going to plan on any loss, we're going to plan to teach those kids, we're going to prepare to teach those kids, that number of kids.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but as a mother, I have seen my kids, I have three kids in the school system, they all start, their class is subfluctuated. My son is the one in that real small class, remember that class, it only had nine, and what do they have now?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So, you know, no matter what, I think it's great, and we're starting out with these small or these big classes, and they fluctuate, but in the end, like he says, we got to prepare to teach all of them, because more are going to move in, fill out, if some leave, more are going to continue to move in. And I just think that the more we can do with the school system, the more we're going to do with the community, and more people are going to want to come here, send their kids to school. So I am, I'm A-OK with all of the, well, obviously, I'm on that committee, but I'm A-OK with all the things that have been going on to make this school modernized, and brought up to where it needs to be, keep our kids here.
Do I get to be public right here?
Sure.
Because my little darlings ran out here excited about something, I don't know what, but they were supposed to come and talk about the locker rooms. We absolutely love those locker rooms. The hallways, when I come in at night, I'm scared of the dark, and I'm scared of bats, we have bats, by the way, we don't use that. I love being able to see where I'm going, it's clean in there. I always told them, you make sure that you wear flip flops in the showers, because they were gross, and there just wasn't anything you could do anymore, they were to a point where they just didn't come clean. It is beautiful, thank you for spending that money. It desperately needed to be done, I've been here a long time, I coached in that locker room for several years, and it was gross. They didn't take showers in there, because it was not very nice. And our bathrooms that we present to the community activities, a lot of pride in those bathrooms, I mean, it's bathroom I know, but they look beautiful.
And are accessible.
Yes.
Which is very important for all the grandparents and stuff that are coming to our projects.
One more reason why we went with the bathrooms this year was, when we started this committee, by the time we looked at all the facilities and got through it all, we didn't have much time left going into the summer, applying anything else up, I mean, everybody was pretty well booked for the summer, and this was one project we could do, and could get somebody in yet to do it. So that was, you know, one of the things we looked at, and why we went with that this year. Not that it didn't need to be done, it's just one of those things that we look at.
We've got a couple students in the back, this would be, if you have something to say, this would be an appropriate time as well. The general meeting has time for public comment, okay, but this is a discussion about the amount of money we're going to ask to continue to spend on projects that we did this last summer.
We were kind of actually part of the group that was going to come in and thank you for spending all the money, this is no Vicky just kind of cut us to the chase there.
Sorry.
But we do really appreciate it, it's really nice to have the new locker rooms and the showers and everything's really nice, because it's, we really appreciate it versus what we've had in the past versus what we have now, we do really appreciate the new facilities.
Okay, thank you all, comments? Somebody have something else, I'm going to call adjournment to this meeting. Okay, we are adjourned. Alright, I'm going to call the third and final meeting to order. We stand and, or say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Am ironic that it's 911 today, how we-
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, second?
Okay, so first and second, it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Meeting is open. The Open Meetings Act is on the door back there, want to read that? Roll call. Vicky.
Here.
Jan.
Here.
Krista.
Here.
Myself, here. And Jason, Mike are excused. Okay, consent agenda. Anybody have anything with the minutes? Okay, there's them, we'll be going to the financial reports.
Doctor, I see we purchased some rugs, can you tell me where those went?
Yeah, they went in each, the east and west entrances of the elementary. So we're now kind of wall-to-wall in each of those, those are high-traffic areas, so we want to, these, the rugs that we bought that are in the main north entrance here in the high school, that are wall-to-wall in there, are actually made out of old pop bottles, and it's kind of the new, the new thing, just in terms of quality. So we put one of those, we put those in that area, also our logo rugs, and each of the entrances made that same product. So we put one in the main office entrance of the elementary, but we actually have more kids in snow boots walking in the east and west, so we put one there, in each of those, and then we put one, that's a better sized one, in the locker room entrance, because we have a lot of dirty traffic comes in the locker room door. So we want to catch most of that before it gets to the hallway into the locker room.
I see we purchased a range for the FCS, are they on rotation?
Well, she had one go, she had one go down, so needed a new range. And of course, she brought, she saw one in another FCS room, one that provides a variety of features different than what, the two that she had, so it made no sense to me to get, to replace it, have two of the exact same kind of range. So we bought one that has a couple of different features, that'll enable her to do some different things that she hasn't been able to do in the past, plus it's ADA compatible, which anytime you're purchasing something new, and there are some regs with ADA, you should try to go ahead at that point, bring them up to code.
And your other question is portable benches?
Yeah, the locker rooms got new benches, so the ones that were 30 years old, we replaced. So each locker room got, Miss Vicky, five, four, five new benches, maybe, maybe six.
Maybe six.
And then down in the football field, we got a bench for each sideline.
I'd like to know the very last item, how you get any roofing for $725,000? Must have been pretty tiny, you got a repair?
Yeah, this is Knox, is it still raining on your desk? We'll find out the next big rain.
Yeah, it's late.
Yeah. So here's Miss Knox, who we're happy to have here, first week of school, she's working diligently at her desk, as every first-year teacher would do, and we had that, well, that five or six, so they can, and then we have about four other places, you know, ceiling tiles that were less than 48 hours in place, soiled in one of the new restrooms. No, seven inches of rain left for any roof. And I don't know any flat roof that doesn't, that water can't find its way in some places, so we brought a contractor up, and he did some spot jobs.
So he found some spots that needed work. And you haven't been able to test them yet, because we haven't had a rain since. It just seems like you can't hardly get them out here.
That glass door replacement, was that the elementary?
Those are these two here.
That was frames, is that the?
Yeah.
That was frames, and everything, how loose they were, just about pushing out of frame.
They were the last two original, in 77 building.
We have another bus that needed a fair amount of repairs. There was that several small things, bus five.
Yeah, I think it was just bus five, wasn't it? The one that was, can you tell me for sure?
I don't know exactly where it was.
Is that the one that we're thinking about replacing? Probably not.
No, I don't know, one we think about replacing doesn't move. It's for sale, I don't know.
Looks like we've had our bad luck, rash bad luck. So this activities budget, are we going into that, or is that just one time, is that something you're going to have every time?
At your request.
I have a question on the CD, CDs, I see we got one, two, is Madison County making a second, we had a higher rate?
It is. I talked to Brian last week, it is going to be at a higher rate, we'll go to higher if we lose over one for another week.
If they get more of it?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, the camera looks everywhere, I mean, it's a fraction of a percent, but it's-
Is it going to get competitive together by itself?
Yeah.
I think it should be up there even.
They're all within a, probably a hundredth of a percent.
I think I might have got something in there, I need to check.
I can send that out.
Okay.
So, Ben, it has nothing to do with this, I just see Jerry Klein's name on here, just for your information, I texted him the other day, see how he was doing down in Florida, what his plans were, if he was sticking it out. Ben got married in Kansas City over Labor Day weekend, and I heard his sister passed away.
Yeah.
Anyway, he's still in Omaha, so they weren't able to get back down to their house and do anything, so it's just, whatever it was when they left, they had no idea. And they were, I think they were right behind, because they're on both sides. So you might keep him in your memories.
I do appreciate the active reporting of this, Jan.
Yeah, I would just, I would encourage you though to, if you have any questions and answers, that's much more detailed, which will bring up just possibly, potentially, you know, more questions, which is fine, absolutely fine, but Jan manages that, so it's possible. Of course, Mr. Frederick is here, he'd be able to answer practically anything on the activities side, I mean, I just, I would not, I'd like to not be able to explain it well enough for you.
I'd just like to know where the smoked snack sticks go, I'd like to have a few of those. Assuming they go to the concession store.
Most of them are.
If they go through the FFA, I mean, I could.
So, like the student council in class, opposite classes that have this money, uh, I'm assuming that that doesn't get taken out of that, just is left for them to use, the students, you know, the class, the twenty seventeen and, and, uh, the visery, do they, does that just stay in there for them to decide? What that you, it's your student council.
Chris, I'm not sure what our tradition has been for how we spend graduate seniors' balance. I have ideas about what I would like to do with it, but I haven't gotten to that point yet. Miss Novicki, you have nowhere.
Uh, we, uh, reimburse the yearbook, uh, usually around five hundred dollars if they have that left, just because they're the ones that, I mean, when I was doing the yearbook, I think we had to pay like twelve hundred dollars to the yearbook of the senior class. So, we give that to clear that balance out, because that's usually the people to buy it the most, the seniors. But usually they spend it pretty much right down to the, what is that, that five hundred?
It would be a, you know, if we were to find that year after year, they've got a balance of four figures when they graduate, then we'd do some things.
Well, like the student council, I, I mean, what are they up to now? Four thousand, I don't know.
They'll have homecoming expenses coming up.
And that, and that comes out of their fund.
Yeah, yeah.
They pay for the DJ.
But what I'm saying, we don't use that money, those kids' money for our everyday, but we don't go in there, take that out for a day.
No.
Okay, that's what, this one gets used on the students.
Yes.
So, those football tickets for, for your, uh, close-up, that gets reimbursed, correct?
For your raffle, those are your raffle for.
Yeah, the kids have to sell it to, have that money back to them. We should actually be okay now, because they turned in a bunch again today, so.
Corey, about what does it cost for us to get referees for a football, a volleyball game?
Football games right now, this cycle, we pay five hundred for five refs per night. Um, for volleyball, I pay two fifty for a duel, two eighty for a triangular, three hundred for a tournament, which is pretty comparable to what the other schools would pay, so.
Do you get to make an offer on that, or do they have that pretty well set? You just hope to call them and get them booked for your games? Any more, you're just hoping you call and get them, they kind of name their price, because there's a shortage of them.
Yeah, every sport right now, it's, volleyball, talk, a couple refs already talked, we said, they're already getting booked up for this year already. We used to have kind of a choice.
So, really, you know, so just so general public knows, you know?
Yeah.
If you have two or three volleyball games a week, that adds up pretty quick.
Yeah, we have a tournament, two duels this last week, so, yeah, three, five, eight hundred dollar benches for referees, so.
My question is, do we even make that back at the door? Right? That's why, okay, that's what I was thinking. As a ball backers, we never make enough money to cover our baseball ref lumps, you know? So, I was just questioning, I assumed it was the same thing. But that was one of those things that I don't think the general public understands, that you don't really, I mean, you have to pay a lot out to have those games.
And concessions don't go under that either, because I get divided up between the groups of the school. And I have workers that I have to pay for each game to, you know, and staff, so. Yeah, it's not like the university or. If you can find the way that works, please bring it on.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so first and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, again, public comment time, number seven. Does anybody have any comments? I haven't been reading the warnings, I guess. You guys are all civil people. No comments at this meeting? Okay, committee reports, budget committee. Pretty well done with that. If anybody has a question? Discussion items, number eight. Discuss and take possible action on second reading of Board Policy four oh three point zero eight, employee fundraising.
First reading is last month, this will be second reading, and then subsequent inaction of this policy. Trying to get out ahead of, uh, school districts doing this type of crowdfunding campaigns, which is an internet style based fundraising. Don't really want to discuss the amount of fundraisers we have and where all that goes and how that operates, and that's something that, you know, we just always need to kind of monitor. It's not something I would necessarily say is out of control, but it's, it's not necessarily a pleasant thing for school districts to have to deal with. But one thing we definitely don't want organizations to do is to start to try to raise funds on the internet.
Motion to approve that, also.
Board Policy education, Board Policy four oh three point oh eight, employee partners.
Second.
Second.
It's number first and seconded, Krista?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number nine, discuss and take possible action on second reading of Board Policy one thousand five point one two, Title One, parent and family member impeachment.
It's a pretty much a state statute, being it, so. I'll make the motion, if there's no discussion, I'll make the motion to pass Board Policy one zero zero five point one two, Title One, parent and family member impeachment.
Second.
Number first and seconded, myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number ten, discuss and take possible action on revision to Board Policy five oh one, objectives for equal educational opportunities for students.
This was tabled last month, and a curious question is when Boy Scouts specifically is identified in the proposed policy, uh, third line of paragraph two. I asked Jim Ruby from NASB Policy Service, and he said, "Boy Scouts is the only specifically mentioned organization in statute." Uh, they got a, a powerful lobby, I guess. Uh, so because they're the only specifically mentioned, he said, "Should prohibit you from," you know, I say, "Well, the other ones aren't mentioned." So, I, I mean, it was, it, it's, I don't know if it's just semantics or whatever, but NASB feels that because Boy Scouts is mentioned in statute, that it should be included in the revised policy.
I'll make a motion to approve. Policy five oh one, objectives for equal educational opportunities for students.
Second.
I'll second.
Number first and seconded, Krista?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Number eleven, discuss and take possible action on revision to Board Policy six oh six point oh six, acceptable use of computers, technology, and the internet.
So, I included the regs, so which would be six oh six, oh six R one, uh, just six oh six R one, three pages of that. So, the question last week, or last month was, why would we take out the line about technology resources in districts shall not be used for personal use, blah, blah, blah? Uh, and Jim said, "The reg, which would go with the policy, if you pass the policy, the regs come with it, uh, provides that, that, that language of the acceptable use, you know, right, on page one, so." Uh, so the regs take, should take care of the question or concern that you would have from last one.
Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion, that we approve. Board Policy six oh six oh six, acceptable use of computers, technology, and internet.
I'll second.
Yes, my first and seconded, myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number twelve, adoption of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school budget. Any more discussion? Not, or am I right in the, asking for motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school budget, if presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so first and seconded, adopt the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school budget. Myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number thirteen, approval tax request for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. And this, three hash, so, if nobody has a question, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the tax request for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
Second.
I'll second.
Yes, my first and seconded, Jan?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Krista?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're into reports, number fourteen, activities report.
Pretty much as presented what I gave you guys. Um, we did add, I can't remember if I thought I got it in on yours or not, we did add a cross-country meet, changing of parent-teacher conferences, and Crofton changing from the day they held theirs, that left us a week without a meeting. Mr. Honhold sat down, kind of contacted a couple of coaches before, and has a meet that day, by that Friday. So, if they leave after conferences that day, they'll be okay to get down there. Pass, start applying for some district, some district type activities. Got one more, possibly, I gotta talk to the doctor, or find out for sure if it's okay, but I know I've got, out for wrestling and basketball right now. We're gonna shoot for, I'm hoping, shoot for districts to speak also, but, you know, because that requires closing school for a day and stuff, so I gotta, we just found out where we're going for one this year, so. Didn't run a speech, closes school for the students, the teachers have to help, right? Yeah. Kind of like what we did last year with conferences. So, that flowed pretty good with conference last year. Basically, you'd be looking at the same type of program this year, I'd get a district, more kids, maybe, maybe not. I'd have to look at that, I don't know, the schools or the district, right?
We've got a lot of schools that are conferences, but how many have speech?
They all had speech, but some only got one or two, or whatever, so, I'd have to look at this, the schools or whatever, but with Tammy and Michelle, that makes a huge difference, because they're so, you know, used to running that type of stuff, very organized, and keep me on track.
So, how do we come out financially if you have a district wrestling or basketball or whatever? Is it, do you make a little bit of money?
District wrestling, we would probably come out a lot better than we do on most things, just because you have, what is it, a day and a half, two days, and you got a lot of.
Two days of admission and.
Yeah, and you're in concessions that all go very well, and.
You're probably looking at a, like a C two, because you can't, or we aren't big enough to do a C two, probably, or.
Well, wrestling is PBC.
Yeah, yeah, but you wouldn't get a C, would you?
I, no.
Just, we, we would host, so we'd be part of that.
Oh, we would, yeah.
Yeah, this isn't like a sub, where you have four other schools come here to a neutral site.
And we did get very good compliments from hosting like basketball, volleyball last year, so, I'm hoping that.
Wait, did they see our bathrooms this year?
Does the NSA send somebody, or reference to that, uh, kind of watch it, or just from the people that showed up?
Yeah, most of the subs is more, I mean, you might have somebody show up, you might not. Um, I don't think we had anybody show up last year, but if something's not right, the NSA does hear about it. But, I mean, annoying couple of schools, they maybe even contact NSA. Well, actually, I think one of them's pretty big with the NSA anyway, so.
I'd like to make a comment here, and we were talking about how enrollment in school things change. Wasn't that long ago, we were talking about rather not to have cross-country, because there's only two or three kids out. Now you had got seventeen kids out, so, you just never know.
That does include junior high, though, too.
Yeah, but I think that's what. Yeah, so.
Is there some reason we don't host our own cross-country year?
When I was still coaching, they gave that up as a way to try and, what I was told as a coach, is that was a way to try to heat the program, or whatever. Since then, and I've contacted some other schools, because I know there was kind of a question about trying to bring it back, but to get enough schools to make it really worthwhile is kind of hard, because some other people started.
Moving to a different.
Moving their means, and, so I do, I've talked to some, it's just trying to find a time when, when they want to give up certain means and come here, and with the expenses and stuff, you want to try to make it.
What do you have for expenses? Do you have to pay the golf course if you run out?
Out, golf course is where we've had it, so.
But do you have to pay that money, what expenses do you have?
Expenses are more medals, workers, I mean, your, expenses are actually a lot less, because you don't have to hire referees and stuff. The course is always, we pay for golf dues, so they.
It's not special for that need, though. Okay, principals report.
I have no word on the ACT cut scores yet from the State Department. I know you're shocked by that. Uh, there's also no word on what they're going to do with the English Language Arts scores. Uh, I do know that MAPS, the people at NELA that writes our MAPS tests, are also going to write our new state test, which I don't understand why we're not just giving them, using our MAPS test scores, because we've already done that, but we're gonna hire them to write a test for the State Department. So, um, on that note, we have no idea how well we did. Our scores are all higher, we need to categorize and find what the state thinks we should be at, but as far as them telling us who's proficient and who is not, we don't know yet. And we were supposed to go in September. Um, September's pretty much come and gone in the State Department of Education world, so, we're hoping for October. Um, our state, skip here a little bit, I think I put in here, ACT average was at twenty-two point six for the twenty-seventh teen school year, which was about three point three above state average. Math and English were our two highest. We did professional development on the sixth, and it dealt with, um, building vocabulary across the curriculum, using Marzano. We had Steph Wannett come in, uh, I think she did a really good job. She brought in some ideas, um, how to use your vocabulary in a way that the kids don't even really know that they're doing it. She used Jimmy Fallon, if anybody stays up and watches him at night. He's got some funny, funny stuff. Obviously, you wouldn't use his vocabulary, but, um, it just gave them some ideas, and so, she's gonna come back and help us, um, next month, and we're gonna do some interventions with the elementary, and I think I'm gonna work on some things with the high school, uh, on two different, they'll be on two different subjects, and then the next week will, or next month, we'll possibly flip that. I guess this is all for our school. She did a really good job. Did she not?
Oh, she was good.
Of course, you can say.
We'll talk to you after.
Parent-teacher conferences will be September twenty-first and twenty-second. Um, on the twenty-second, they will end at eleven thirty. It's four to eight on the twenty-first.
Isn't that kind of late to keep them here until eleven thirty, you know?
Hey, yeah. Hey, yeah. And we have grandparents today, or grandparents day today. Honestly, I wasn't here, I was dealing with my, my son's knee today, and so we got back into town about three thirty.
But I commend Ms. Knox and Ms. Jan. They had the kids well prepared and superly did a bunch of.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Good job. Um, and so I had to call on people to kind of step up today and help me out, but we had to get that done, and so I, I talked to several people, and they said it went just fine, and it's amazing it, it can run without me here, and.
It's amazing.
Homecoming is September twenty-ninth, coronation is at two thirty, and there are lots and lots and lots of things going on. Back to the bonfire, I think on Tuesday now is when they want to do the bonfire, um, and then there'll be. to do the bonfire, and then there'll be spirit week, of course, and all that fun stuff. Miles of smiles will be here September twenty-sixth, that's the program we do every year, where they bring in hygienists, and they work, look at the kids' teeth, so. Also, I forgot to put this in here, and so, I'm going to propose it now, just so you can, you can hear it, I don't need discussion on it, I'm just gonna put the thoughts in your head, because I have the sheet all typed up. Possibly, maybe Dr. Arl can email it to you, so you can read through it and do your own investigative work. It's the proposal for changing the graduation honors. I, I would really like to get away from the valedictorian, salutatorian. I put some examples in here that, you know, in this class, we would honor, I have my glasses on, so bear with me here, I think it's about sixteen kids. It's been a long day. We would have eight students that would have cum laude, and we can call them, good lord, I can't say them. Cum laude would be, one of them we could use, we could do distinction, high distinction, highest distinction, we could do that however we wanted, but we'd have about sixteen kids this year that we would honor instead of four. Next year, it would be seven, according to what these numbers play out as, we'd have seven instead of four. You can still have your speakers, there are a lot of schools going to it, colleges just kind of ask the question, do you rank your students now? It's not, what is your class rank? It's more of, what kind of classes did you take, and what your G P A is, and your A C T, because those things should all correlate. If you take, you know, a pretty rigorous course, you should do pretty well in the A C T, and I'm not talking a thirty-two. This senior class is a unique bunch, we, we probably won't have one of those go through for a very, very long time yet. So, I don't really want to use them for an example, because they're just, but, you know, next year, seven kids that, that take the hard math, the hard science, the, you know, and, and take four years of Spanish, I, I think they should be kind of rewarded for those things, so it's just something to think about. Most of their things are based on their A C T and, and the rigor of their, their core schedule now. So, just something for you to read through, there's lots and lots of schools in the State of Nebraska that have gone to this, Amesworth was the latest.
And you'd like to start that this graduating class?
Next year's graduating class. Yeah, I think we would ask parents, probably not happy with that.
Would there ever be a possibility, if you had, you know, this class, and I picked on this class, and just where we had eleven kids, say that followed all the way through, and you only had ten, eleven kids that graduated, would there be a possibility you wouldn't have any kids that paid that?
Oh, I would doubt you wouldn't have any. But that's, you know, I saw that when I was in Dodge, we had that many kids, we didn't do the top four, we just, we might only have done the top two, but had we used something like this, we would have had, you know, sometimes eight of the eleven get it, because of the classes that they took. And, and again, then you get into that question of, what's a difficult class and, and what isn't? I don't know, I mean, if I had to go down and take a class from Mr. Commander, from Mr. Erhardt, I probably wouldn't do very well, people. I mean, I, I think Mr. Erhardt probably would want to, like, please think that I didn't have to come back. So, I think that's kind of all misconstrued as to, to what's difficult and what's not, because it depends on the kid. And, and again, this class is very unique in the sense that they're, they're just a, all of them together, it's kind of like you can get all those athletes in one class, and, you know, you have eight of them that can go win a state tournament or something, so, I'll see, I'll have him email it to you, and you can snoop around, I know Amesworth does it, Dayton City does it, Seward, there's some Omaha schools to do it, so, I'm thinking if a class A school can do it, thinking a smaller school should be able to do it.
So, do they all pretty much have the same standards that they have to do that, or...
Yeah, most of them are a three-five and above, so you go, I have this one like a three-five, two a three-seven, and a three-eight, two a three-nine, and then the people with a straight four-oh. And most everybody uses the U N L system to base it on the four-four-oh.
It's definitely something that I support, and valedictorian, salutatorian is just, it is kind of becoming outdated, I know it's a, it's a pretty sacred thing, I understand that, it'd be like getting rid of, kind of, Kim and Queen. But it's, this isn't something that somebody gets, I look at it as something they earn, distinction and honor that they earn, if they achieve, acted, a level of academic proficiency, they should be recognized and honored. We already have a system in place that would tell whether the board considers to be even a more greater risk courses, so I think, you know, you have something in place to account for taking a more rigorous schedule versus not, Mr. Novicky points out, he thinks a good point, though, just because someone's rigorous to somebody, it's not necessarily somebody else, so.
Well, we have kids that don't take classes, because they know that they're sitting at three, and they don't want to drop to four, so they'll purposely not take one of those math or science classes, because they want to stay there.
We don't want to put them in a position to be competitive with their, we want them to be competitive against the standard, not against somebody in their class. So, it's something, we have some time to discuss it, and can, you know, more research, whatever, we'll get that out to you and let you look at it, and decision privately made, should be made early to mid next spring, though, so this year's junior class, if there's a change, just can anticipate it, and those families can bring questions. But honestly, it just takes a little bit of re-education on the part of kids, and more importantly, maybe parents that don't get so hooked up on valedictorian, salutatorian, if you think your child is running for that, this isn't gonna take away scholarship opportunities, if there'd be a move away from that, somebody saying, oh, if you're not valedictorian, you don't have that, that distinction, that's, that's really...
Well, if you have, if you have, that's kind of in between two of those levels. If he's not gonna be first or second, he might just say, well, I'm fine with being in third level, and now it might be, okay, I'm gonna work a little harder to get up into that second level.
And you can still have your speakers, you know, and, and I, I'll take this class for example. The two kids that are top in the class, I'm assuming would get voted to be their speakers, they're both great speech kids, and have lots of medals from that, and, and just do a really good job, so I'm assuming that, I mean, and you have to remember, I sponsor those kids, and I'm not gonna let them turn that into a joke, we are not just gonna vote somebody in because it's a joke, I mean, graduation is pretty serious business, and for the most part, I think they would know that, but, so, I just think it's something to look at, and, and still do your speakers, but by the time graduation rolls around, they've already applied to college, they don't care who valedictorian, salutatorian are, I mean, they, they're done, they're ready to go to school.
You talked about that third place, back to my son, he would have wanted to stay in that third place, and he didn't get a second and have to talk.
Absolutely, Tom.
He would have taken the grades he had, there's classes not to get him a second.
And there are some that do that, too, because they don't want to do it.
But now you could get him a second, still not have to talk.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I apologize for not getting that, but I just, I, I think it's, it's sitting on my desk, and I think it's important, and I'd just like to at least discuss it. And last but not least, every day, there's about five or six things going on every single day, so, you know, need something to do? Come on up, there's something to do.
Okay, presidents report. I just want to thank everybody on the committees, I know Vicki and I, Jason's on the budget committee, and Vicki and I, or Mike, Vicki, I, Mike are on the budget, Vicki and I, Jason just came back from Lincoln and seminars, and Dr. Arl went with us down there, and you guys are all on committees, meeting these people in the, with the building, the grounds, it just amazes me how many smart people it takes to make schools run, and come up with all these tax rules and laws and everything, and then they put some, people like me to go into meetings with teachers or whoever, and try and make it all work, so, it's kind of humbling, but I just want to thank you guys all for putting in the time and doing the work. Okay, superintendent.
The regional meeting, I, I think Mike, I remember that once I went to it last year in Norfolk, it was a rec for about an hour or so last year, it's informative, it's interesting, you can sum up it, repetitive information, which is good.
That's where those law books came from, that...
Yeah, so, that, the registration deadline for that is Wednesday, so if you're interested in going, I gave you information last month about that. The school foundation committee met this last week, and we started divvy up some responsive, uh, two weeks, we started divvy up some responsibilities for our Plagueview Public Schools Alumni Memorial Gulf Fish Event on the fourth of August of two thousand eighteen.
How's that gonna fit on your license plate?
We may find a way to kind of shorten that up. So, Krista's on that group, and so, she could maybe speak a little bit to that, but just, just trying to, to, and had a good conversation with the Alumni Association, so, actually, trying to see if we can synergize our efforts with the Alumni Association, the P P E A possibly as well, because right now, P P E does a great job with alumni tournament, alumni banquet, alumni does a great job with the alumni banquet during clown festival, the foundation kind of needs a signature event, and kind of thinking this would be it. We just need to make sure we're sending a message to our community and alumni that we are all working together, we're not in competition with one another, so, had a good conversation with Diane on that, Kristy, I think you were... So, that's moving forward. I sent you a link, our kids are on high school, headlines Austin is on that, so, they'll, they'll, we've, we've got the perfect three dudes to get that thing started, so they'll go out and they'll start bringing some other people, it's about two minutes, one and a half to two minutes, once a week, it's just like, what's going on in your school today? Everything from activities today, we got some great new bathrooms, hand it up a little bit, have some fun, so that's a neat thing to be a part of. I'm applying for a Kino Grant, see if I can get an ice machine on this side of Woodland Avenue. That, that, we, we kind of have a training room now, we really sort of do, that it would be accessible to both boys and girls. So, we'd like to have an ice machine over here. Cory does a good job bringing ice over, so it's in our freezer, and so, we have it, and that's good, but we really should have an ice machine right across the hallway from the gym, or right down the hallway from the Tartan Gym, which, which has four, five, six catered meals a year, where they maybe like to have access to ice, rather than stealing it from across the street, so, an ice machine is forty-three hundred bucks for the size that I would like to get, which would be smaller than the one in the kitchen, so, we'll see if the, the city council thinks that's a good expenditure, has to benefit the community well, we have several community organizations that use our Tartan Kitchen and have events, so maybe, maybe that, we'll get that paid for, that would be pretty soon. The open house is, is a week from Sunday, so I'll get some details in that, not a week from Sunday, this Sunday, I'll get some details in the paper, so that's from four to five, just one, just one hour window, four to five, folks can come, we might get five, people here might get fifty, but it is about their only opportunity, if they want to see the locker room. They can always say, well, I can see the bathrooms when I go, but if you want to see the locker rooms, and that kind of marks it a little bit, with the pirate gym bathrooms, but, I don't know that we need to do anything other than open the doors and facilitate, we don't need refreshments or anything, I would suppose. But I'll, I'll get Brooke to write something nice up for that, and then our facility planning committee's gonna be right after that, at five o'clock in here, to have just our first conversation, maybe about when do we want to meet again next, I probably won't start talking about what's, you know, phase two, if we were even calling it that. But if you can be on hand, that would be okay, if not, you know, those would, you know, be running off to Chicago or something crazy like that on a weekend, why don't you do such a thing? But, and then I was invited to be one of six superintendents in State of Nebraska to sit on state wrestling school tournament reflection committee, let's see if we wanted, if they, they started that, it's the only sport that has two state tournaments, and they're in year five, I think, we've participated in it maybe twice, and they said they'd give it five years, and then they want to see, do we continue this, how do we change it, how do we make it? Right now, it's after the individual state tournament, so it's very, it's a pretty anticlimactic event, and so, they, I think they feel like status quo is not an option here, so, there's one wrestling coach and one superintendent from each region, so for region three, they invited me partly because I suppose I had a wrestling background, and Plagueview is recognized as a community that has a wrestling history. That will require me to have some meetings out of district, and those meetings are gonna be either Lincoln or Grand Island, there's not gonna be six or seven or eight of them, but there might be two or three. So, I would like to represent our region and our school district on that committee, with your permission.
As long as you get our opinion before you go.
Yes, I will ask you what you know about wrestling.
And then you'll be off of that board once they make their...
Yeah. It'll be a recommendation to the Board of Control.
Is that just one year, or what is it?
Not called Board of Control, the Board of Directors.
Is that a one-year commitment, or...
I can't imagine that it will be more than one year, in fact, it'll probably be about a four-month commitment, or six months. And they don't even know how many meetings they've ever had together, so. And then there's your enrollment update, as far as I know, that hasn't changed, Mr. Novicky, we had any hit or out?
At the end of this week.
It's like a box of chocolates.
The end of this week, two more coming up.
Okay. All right, and then meetings out of district, or playtime out of district as well.
Oh, hey, Dan. How's Quinn? Jay.
Hey, everybody good?
We have to have, um, State Convention, yes, we have to have our calendars for convention.
For in November, State Education hours?
When do they, when do you make the rooms?
You cannot make those, let's see, until, I have it on my calendar.
So, they're middle of Septembers?
It, it will be coming up, I gave you information last month.
Yes, I thought it was like this coming Wednesday or something.
Registration due for N A S B meeting, oh, registration opens for State Convention on Wednesday. So, it, it opens, don't have to have it in, now, the last two years, we've been out in embassy suites, I mean, we, we, we kind of would maybe like to stay right there at convention, but it's been, I, I have no complaints with staying out at the old market. Who went last year?
I think...
Just two, just three of us went.
I went.
Yeah, Kelly went.
Yeah.
I don't think the one that...
You will be...
I will.
You will not go.
I'm not gonna, no.
Okay.
I know it is, but I got more chances.
So, you might, yeah, make a decision on that, look at that information that I gave you, and, and decide if...
Does those residents downtown, they don't go up as fast as the...
Well, I don't think so, I think, I, I would think a majority of the people would request the embassy suites. But some people would rather get out of there, nice place to be.
Yep, I'll be...
You can, if you would like.
Yeah, just confirm with me if you, if you want me to register you.
What date is Saturday in November, what?
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
They sent out the booklet on, or you can...
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
And just for information, we won't be starting, keep the negotiations, they have notified us this month sometime, right, first meeting? So, that will be starting, doesn't have to be done until...
First, first meeting has to be done November.
First, last, right, good morning.
You can sound like funny music here.
Cheers. That's why we went to Lincoln, that's what that was about. Okay, meeting is adjourned. I got on the phone, I didn't go into the classroom.
I'll be waiting for them.
Oh, there is this stuff.
Is that currently going to be the... And then, and then if I can get a copy of those, that's what I need.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff.
Just to put into my mix tomorrow, yeah.
Maybe if I do kind of understand it, it won't be too painful.
Right.
Yes.